Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the November 3rd Columbia County Planning Commission Meeting for order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Skinner will lead us in our invocation. Commissioner Noah will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. We live in a country that is free, Father, and we ask that you protect those that depend us, keep us free, Father. We ask that you be with us tonight in this meeting. Decisions we make will benefit our citizens and our county. Ask these things in your precious name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation for God, visible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Be seated if you could. I ask you to please silence your cell phones during the meeting. And we do have four commissioners present tonight. Commissioner Henderson is in Fort Myers on business, but we'll be back next meeting. Gentlemen, I need either an amendment, a motion to amend, or a motion to approve the minutes from October 20, 2016.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Ares 4-0. Gentlemen, we need a motion to either approve or amend tonight's agenda.
Does Chair make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Your second.
So moved.
All in favor? As it stands, passes 4-0. We have no presentations tonight, but before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on November 15th, 2016, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, have a new employee over here, Ms. Elizabeth, has taken Ms. Lilly's place. But if you'd like to obtain a request to speak for them, you can see one of those two nice ladies there. And also, these proceedings are recorded, so if you would like a recording of tonight, ask for it. With that being said, we have no unfinished business, no new business, except for a few public hearings. First, Mr. Butler.
File RZ 161101. Mr. Chair, this is a request for a change in conditions on 12.65 acre parcel off Horizon South Parkway, having this works during. The location of the parcel, west side of Horizon South Parkway. Parcel's currently zoned C2, general commercial. And it is surrounded by plenty of developments to the north, which is the, and also C2 developments to the south, and also east with some RA to the southwest as well. This is a review of the site. Again, it's currently under development. What the request is for a reduction in the right-of-way from the, well, let me back up. The rezon had some conditions on it. First of all, it was a 60-foot right-of-way. They requested a reduction down to 50 feet, and also requiring sidewalks on both sides of the road. We'll see in a minute where those were originally proposed. Due to some environmental issues, they'll need to reduce that down to only one side of Husk Box Way, and also removing a requirement for a 6-foot wide planter strip. This is a street view of the site. Again, currently under development. It's been, and again, quite extensive environmental permitting had to go through. And again, existing condition of the site. This is a plot of the parcel, again, showing the 12.65 acres on the west side of Horizon South Parkway. In terms of future land use map, it's in the Gateway Activity Center. Again, the Gateway Activity Center is predominantly supposed to be commercial, as well as some high-density residential. And again, it does fit the future land use map for this change in conditions. This shows the development as a whole. Again, originally, the proposal, or the proposed rezoning back in 2015 had sidewalks on both sides of the road. What you see here is kind of what that condition will require, where they are required to have two on Stoner Way, and then one on Husk Box Way. Staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. Again, solid should be required on both sides of Stoner Way and one side Husk Box, and all other conditions, RZ 150403 shall apply. And again, the change in conditions with the 50-foot right-of-way is approved, and also there are 6-foot wide planter strips also. That includes staff recommendation.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Come on forward, and we know you, but give us your name and home address.
Bobby Maybaum, 1008 Meg Street, Augusta, Georgia. I'm here representing the owner, Mr. Daring, helping him with the development. As staff said, all we're asking for is a reduction from a 60-foot. When we originally got the zoning done, we agreed with the 60-foot right-of-ways. That was done prior to doing a site plan, and we ran into a number of issues with wetlands and state waters and so forth that really condensed the use of our property. So, once the site plan was done, we determined that we really need to go to a 50-foot right-of-way. We also are tying into two streets. Husk Box Way is an existing 50-foot right-of-way, and on the other end, we're tying into a 50-foot right-of-way. So, just maintaining what is in place now. On sidewalks, on one side, as you can see by the diagram, on the right side, all there is is a retention bond. No, won't be any lots or anything backing up on that side of the street. Those are the two conditions we're asking for. Also, there was a condition requiring a 6-foot planter, and going to, from a 50 to a 60-foot right-of-way, it would really, would not be room to put the 6-foot planter in. We're asking for that to be removed. But the two corner pieces of property, both are under contract with professional buildings going to be built, and based on Columbia County's landscape plan, I'm sure everybody's landscaping will be more than adequate for what will be in place there. Happy to answer any questions.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Go to where the trees are. Are those part of your property?
Yeah, they're coming, the trees will be removed, and that's where roadway will be going through where the trees are.
Okay, so they won't be there.
Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Maybaum.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and gentlemen, I'll be glad to accept a motion.
Does Chair make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 16-11-01, change of conditions for tax map 062, parcel 086C off Horizons.
Your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? To approve carries 4-0. Ms. Boltie, file RZ 161102, master sign plan for the Jones group.
Yes, sir. This is a request to adopt a master sign plan at 4022 Washington Road.
Ray Peters, 139.
We need to have the presentation first. Security, we need to escort this car dealer out of here. Y'all have a seat, and let staff present, then we'll give you an opportunity to come up. Mr. Jones and I have known each other for a number of years here.
The property is located between Washington and Columbia Road, and is also bordered by Flowing Wells Road to the east and Kroger Road to the west. The property is currently zoned C2, general commercial, as are most of the other properties in the area. You can see an aerial of the site here, and then we have some pictures of the existing signs. These are the two along Washington Road, the current sign along Flowing Wells, and then the two facing Columbia Road. You can see these signs on the master sign plan as well. The main purpose in adopting this master sign plan is to add the new freestanding sign for Mazda along Flowing Wells Road. The total sign face area for all of the freestanding signs is still under that permitted by code, and the signs are in keeping with the character of the property and the area, and the intent of corridor overlay district that they are in. Staff is therefore recommending approval, with one condition, Flowing Wells is going to be impacted by a road widening project, and our traffic department has requested that the sign be located 33 feet from the curb to keep it out of that construction area.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? All right, guys, now y'all can come forward.
Well, are there any questions for us?
I'm assuming this is just so you all can hear to Mazda's franchise requirements?
It requires to have the sign.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Is there any more information you need to give these folks to consider this?
Well, we're just trying, you know, the manufacturers themselves require us to have this sign. Been a while over here, we finally got established. The sign that they had wasn't designed at the time we originally built it. They just want a branding of the sign. I understand there's a setback for the road. That's not a problem, but had a lot of things tied to this identity and brand identity and stuff. I think it goes along with the property itself. Right at 40-something people over when we came, if we could get this sign.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and gentlemen, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve zoning RZ 16112. Condition.
Go here, second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0.
Now, if you have another... What's left? Okay.
They'll have to start kicking people out across Columbia Square. All right, Ms. Boltie, file RZ 161103.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a rezoning from S1 Special to PRD Planned Residential Development for a third of an acre portion of the property located at 4031 Evans to Locks Road. This is on the north side of Evans to Locks, and it is adjacent to a property that was zoned for a planned residential development earlier this year. This corner that you see outlined in red is included on their approved site plan. The parcel ID was inadvertently left off of their previous application, so this is, this application basically cleans up the zoning to zone all of the property included on their approved site plan. This is an aerial of the property, and you can see their approved site plan here, and outlined in red is roughly the portion that was left out of that previous rezoning that the motion tonight will cover. And staff is recommending approval with the same conditions that applied to the rest of the development.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Does this increase the density from what was proposed, so it's identically the same? We're just cleaning up?
Right. So the site plan here was approved with those two lots that are outlined in red already on it. So they already have the lots approved. They just don't have this parcel zoned correctly.
Right. Is the applicant here this evening?
I'm Bill Quarter with Blue Water Engineering, 842 Sparkleberry Road, Evans. I'm here on behalf of the applicant who's out of town, and I would just like to point out that this was not done under our watch. We weren't involved in the project when it was originally rezoned, but we since became involved and figured out that there was a missing piece to the puzzle there. So, like Danielle said, we're just here tonight to clean that up. The area was already included in the master plan. I think part of the issue the first time was some difficulty in obtaining deeds and plats, because this is a portion of a neighboring property where we were able to put our hands on the deed and plat. Glad to answer any questions you have.
When will you start construction?
We just finished up the survey, so we're starting the engineering now. So I would say, probably early next spring, spring of next year.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Does Chair make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 16-11-03, rezoning from S1 to PRD for the .3 acre portion of the property at 4031 Evans Locks?
Go here, second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. All right, Mr. Butler, file RZ 161104.
Mr. Chair, this is a request for a rezoning from R1, residential C2 commercial, 2.26 acres, located at 422 and 426 Lewiston Road. Parcel located on the east side of Lewiston Road. And currently zoned R1 property, north, south, and east, or is also an R1 property across the street on Lewiston, west is zoned C2 as part of the Kroger development. That was the aerial view. And again, you can see there's two, currently two existing houses on the property. That was a view of 422 Lewiston, 426 Lewiston. With the application, we do have a concept plan, again, showing a fast food restaurant, and also a commercial development on the property. Staff does have some issues with the current proposal. First of all, as Lewiston Road is, as many people know, currently undergoing a widening, so the right-of-way is somewhat unknown. So one of the things that we are concerned with is without knowing the right-of-way, we can't really have conditions on the property. With the Kroger development across the street, there are some pretty significant conditions that we would want to apply to this development as well. Again, all developments in this area, especially adjacent to Kroger, are typically need to look similar, be integrated together. So that's one of the issues with it. Also, the rezoning to the north that was back in September for Dunkin' Donuts, that was connected to the Kroger development as part of the overall development. It wasn't technically an actual part of it, but it was connected to it. In this case, you don't have a connection to any adjacent commercial. It's also not a, right now, a plan to have it integrated into a commercial development that has several parcels, such as this one here or this one to the south. With that, it makes it much easier to rezone the property. From the standpoint of the Girth Management Plan, it is in the Gateway Activity Center. It is slated for commercial. Both, all three of these parcels are slated for commercial in that plan. So there is some weight behind that, but at this point, staff really can't recommend any action, but we know, since we have more information on Lewiston Road. They're recommending tabling at this time.
When will you get more information?
That is an unknown currently. That's more of a question received, Castle.
Are you waiting for information from the county or the state?
I would be. Both, to be honest.
Well, and if you'll recall, this same request was submitted at least six months ago. Well, a little while ago, at least six months ago. So I wasn't wrong. You know, I think at that time, the commission, not yet you guys, I went through you guys, the commission actually gave the impression that they would much rather see the Lewiston Road project farther along before they would consider any sort of rezoning, additional rezoning with these parcels, just because of their size. These are two relatively small parcels. There was some question about right-of-way needs, and whether these parts, these two parcels could even be developed as commercial. There was some question as to whether another zoning district could be more appropriate, given the surrounding development. A lot of questions were up in the air. So the commission proposed to the applicant to wait, just a little bit farther along in the process. And they did wait, but we're still really at the same point that we were before. We don't have a lot of answers to give, and I think there are still too many, too many questions for us to try to consider a rezoning of these two parcels.
Mr. Castle, could we get you to come forward before we start the public hearing, and talk to us about potential development here, and what you know and what you don't know?
Depends on who you talk to.
You don't know?
As Mr. Strickland said, you know, this project's in flux. We actually got a meeting with the commissioner of DOT tomorrow to talk about this project in particular, going all the way from Columbia Road down to I-20. I think we've had our consultant really, really take a hard look at this intersection. I think we've got a right-of-way line that was presented previously, probably work with, all construction, as far as shore or whatever. You know, a lot of that's going to depend upon the use. Signal coming to that intersection, it would press a lot of impacts to that, the immediate vicinity, but one of the driveways they're proposing, there's some hurdles they're going to have to overcome with DOT.
Signal going to come to Autumn Trail and Bluegrass in Lewiston?
That should be in before the end of the year. As far as the right-of-way and Strickland's point, we've been really trying to push him to give us a line, and they get, that's something we can work with. Fortunately, I haven't gotten with him on it yet. It's not dissimilar to anything he's seen before, but at least it's a little bit more firmer.
One of the concerns that I've received a call on was the elevation of the businesses on the lot. Are they going to be at road grade or below road grade?
Although, I mean, they'll be below. I mean, the roadway of the existing property, it is, natural terrain drops down. Heard out there is, as Mr. Bell would say, is it premium? So to lift that site would probably make it a cost prohibitive project. So I think what they're working with, with the existing grades, there's just no way of getting around that.
How far below road grade do you think the parking lot will be?
Probably at its largest point, it's probably about 10 feet, but it does have some slope.
Will any part of the lot be at road grade? Ingress and egress?
Oh, yeah. Obviously, the driveways are going to have to tie in at that point. They'll be there, walking facilities or pedestrian facilities they have coming into it. They'll bring the road up, coming out, so it'll take a little bit deeper, but it looks like they were able to tie the grades in. That's why they had to pull it so far away from the intersection, kind of chase it down. I said, there are some hurdles within DOT to make this site plan work, but as far as the right-of-way, I think we got something we can work with.
Think we're looking at a D cell lane?
That would be up to DOT. I think it probably would, given the existing volumes that are out there and what this may generate, and this driveway also contemplates commercial on the other property. Yeah, so you'd probably be looking at something like that, for sure.
That's something you think you'll put to bed tomorrow in your meeting?
Oh, no. Commissioner's kind of hard to get a meeting with. This would be through the district, but work with them. It's just, it's just a project that's in flux. Challenged with finances right now. So, I think, at this point, I think we could probably start firming up a right-of-way line.
Gentlemen, any questions, Mr. Castle?
Yeah, Mr. Castle, looking at the ingress and egress, is there going to be that available there on Autumn Trail, as I see it?
I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
Ingress and egress, is that going to be present on Autumn Trail? At the top of the drawing?
I think you would have trouble making this work commercially without some access to Autumn Trail, given the signal. Type of corridor that Lewiston Road's going to be. Going to be a median down there dividing off the, had a signal there serving the Kroger development to put in. When that comes up, you'd need that, you'd need that signal to make it. For access to it.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Is the applicant here this evening? It's Mills.
Thank you. My name is Matt Mills. I live at 3009 Lake Barst drive, Augusta, Georgia. I think it's been almost a year. I think it was December 15th. I think it was one of the property owner's birthday the last time we met. Decided to withdraw at that time because there were concerns about timing. And Millside has given me plenty of time to think about what to talk to you tonight, because normally I would talk about all the precedents out there for properties that are, have less frontage than this, that have lower traffic counts than this, that have, they're further from the interstate than this, they're not across the street from a major shopping center. Talk about all the merits of why this is commercial, but I don't think anybody really disagrees. I mean, read the write-ups, and you look at the future land use plan, I don't think anybody would agree, disagree that the highest, best use of this property is not residential. In fact, I think what we're proposing, nobody's adamantly opposed to. The, and it does meet the future land use. So I guess, now what I'd ask you to do is put yourself in the shoes of these property owners who've been living here, who have waited an extra year to come back before you in hopes that some of the timing issues had worked themselves out. They've been living through the traffic. They've been living through the construction. That are some of the concerns. You know, we all buy property with the expectation that we'll be treated fairly, and that, and we have certain expectations that know the laws, and we know what's going to be expected. The concerns we're hearing right now are right-of-way's an issue, although hopefully that's just been alleviated with what Mr. Castle just said. He thinks the line's pretty firm and consistent. Talking about, but the timing's not great. It'd be better if we wait. I mean, kind of what it boils down to is what I'm hearing is, it's not convenient right now. It's not really the family's fault that the county was not ahead of the curve and prepared for the traffic. I'm hearing comments like, "We prefer to have a master plan." How do you respond to that? I represent a lot of clients, and they're small businesses. And am I supposed to tell if they need an acre? Well, you really need to buy 10 or 12 acres, or have it under control so that you can master plan it, or you won't be able to get your zoning done, because they only need an acre. I mean, to ask for that is, I've never heard it before in other municipalities, and I'm working seven states. So, it is convenient. It'd be great if we had it. And luckily, Kroger, when we did the Kroger deal, they needed 20 acres, so we took the whole block. Heck, we took half the subdivision. That was great, and it was convenient. But, you know, the reality is, this is a hearing about land use. We're looking at a plan that's conceptual. We've got a complicated site that's got some grade issues, depth issues. We wouldn't pursue this if we didn't think there was a happy meeting where we could work together with the county to come up with a solution. But you can't spend thousands and thousands of dollars to the engineers, no offense, Bill, but can't spend thousands and thousands of dollars with them. I think we spent like five, but you can't spend thousands and thousands more dollars to figure out and fine-tune these things without knowing you got your zoning. This is about, I mean, zoning hearings are about land use, from all my history. And it is convenient if you got a good master plan. This plan is conceptual. It was done in an effort, because some of the commissioners had said, "Hey, you know, we'd really like to see two buildings rather than..." And then the person that was trying to buy it said, "Hey, look, I'd love to have two buildings." We've also heard planning talk to us about, "You know what? We're more concerned with about tying in a road for interconnectivity back to the property down here," which maybe is unresidential, but it's unoccupied. We sold it to a client of ours who's holding it and plans to do commercial development, and he is kind of waiting to see what we do, and weighing his options, and weighing the users out there, to figure out what he wants to do long-term. But he's going to, his intentions are full commercial, so you're not negatively impacting anybody here. But we can't master plan with somebody, he's not ready to master plan. I wouldn't be either if I was in his shoes, because I may be dreaming a fresh market. I wouldn't be either if I was in his shoes because I may be dreaming a fresh market and fresh market, I've been on this site, so they wouldn't be talking to us. So, again, I ask you to put yourself in the shoes of our property owners. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions. We respectfully ask you to recommend approval of this request right at a year. Timing is close in regards to the traffic, and really those issues need to be done at the time that you've spent the money, figure out the grades, figure out the access. Frankly, if they don't work and they don't meet the ordinance, they don't get approved. This is about land use. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of my thoughts, a little different than what I normally speak about.
Assuming that, that everything gets approved and you, and you get to the construction phase, what kind of design would you look at so we're not looking at the top of a building? I've had a number of phone calls on the dialysis clinic over on North Bel Air, how you can actually see onto the roof, and that was just a design that somehow made by, made it by everybody and...
Well, things, two things to think about. First off, where are the grades now? A lot of people can't, I read these things all the time, so it's easier for me to see, but this is following a grade. This is following a grade. Really, the reality is, you're, if I recall, Bill, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, it's 13 feet below the grade or 15 feet at the worst point here, but up here, it's more or less even with grade here, and then it starts dropping off right in here.
Yeah, people are always concerned about building in a hole if they're the person building the building. Seeing it, look at a building down there. When you have a building, the closer that building is to the roadway, more extreme terrain is going to have a building that's close to the road and it's five feet below the grade. Push that building back 100 feet, five feet below the grade. On this side, we've got the building here pretty far back, so in terms of the road grade, not only do we have to look at the road grade now, but what will the road grade widening? But this, this building here will not be significantly below road grade. It's not going to be. Did some grading on the site and we're planning to bring in that quantity. This, this building over here in the corner, if we went with a two-building scenario, is pretty close to the, to the grade near it, a little bit low, but not... And of course, these, these grades are preliminary as well. If road plans are a little further along when we're designing the site, how our site grades can tie in. I don't, I don't think that you can have a building that's so low.
Other than there's other means of handling it. I mean, people don't want to look at air conditioning buildings.
I was under the impression that 30-foot went from 10 to down to 30, or up to 30.
30-foot difference is really the elevation between the road tie-in here...
I'm sorry.
...and here to the site. We're making up a lot of that with the way the height is great.
Really steep, in this particular plane, which is not the final plane, there's a really steep driveway in the back. Comes up at like an 8 or 10% grade, kind of like the maximum allowable. So, these, this is high. This is steep. This is relatively flat to the neck of the highway because it's a parking lot, has to be. But again, this is preliminary. We've got, we've got to get to something. I mean, heck, there's another site plan, how do we erase all these? There's a, there's another site plan where the detention pond is not below ground and is below, down in a hole where you don't see it, and everything else is higher with the driveway in the rear changing the grade so that you really get a flat site up here with the building.
Then you just have one building?
Then you just have one building. But it's, it's kind of like, we don't know the right-of-way yet. We're hearing mixed signals from commissioners and planners and traffic folks as to what's the most important. I think they're still getting their direction, but heck, we've got to spend a little more money on the engineering and we can't do so until we get the funding. So, these are all site plan issues and I, again, really think the zoning's about plan use. We're happy to continue to do this, but we're talking about a plan that's conceptual. And I hope you all understand that. This is not necessarily what will be built. This is, I think, get to what will be built. It will meet the code. It has to meet the code. It will, and it will have involved numerous conversations with staff. Hopefully, staff will be, instead of us trying to go out to the various parties of the county, they'll be kind of giving us direct insight as to what's the best for the county for building.
By the, by the time you get there, your neighbor may come to you and say, "Hey, I want to grow in and develop my site, too."
He might, might. And I mean, again, that's ideal, but we can't control property that... I don't represent him, talk to him, and he's not against it. He needs to meet with traffic first to see how the plan's going to affect him. Some efforts to do.
Gentlemen, any more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Come on forward.
All right, I hesitated. My name's Clifford Wiley. I live at 422 Lewis Road, and I just, I just wanted to, uh, have my say. I wanted to express that our, in the, in the past few years, since they demolished the houses across the street, since they started building up Kroger, and now even closer, like right on the corner of our lot, they're starting to work on the traffic signal and stuff. Traffic is ridiculous. There's no left turns out of our house for like six, six solid hours in the day. It's just back-to-back traffic, and every now and then you get somebody that's so polite that'll let you through, but you can't count on that. The construction's really loud. It vibrates the house. Every, all hours of the day, we hear backing up, that beep, beep, beep. It's incessant. It's driving me crazy. Our, our front yard is so exposed now because like there's, half the trees in the area are gone and like we have our six-year-old daughter, Penelope, and we, I mean, I said this a year ago, and it hasn't gotten better. Like, we don't, don't let her play in the front yard. It's real concerning to see that many drivers observing our daughter playing in the yard. Never mind the debris that gets flicked off the road. It's just not a good environment for her. We let her play in the backyard, but you know, what she's got, she can only play in half of our yard. It's not getting better. Every, every time we wave, every day that goes by, traffic gets a little heavier and it's just, it's old. It wears on you, and we're getting tired and, you know, it's not a happy place to live anymore. That's, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for hearing me.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak either for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve file RZ-16-11-04.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Okay, gentlemen, any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Prove? All against? Motion carries three-one. Next level for you guys. Yes. All right, next issue, file VA-161101.
I'm Mr. Chair. This is a request for a variance section 9853 lists a lot of structural requirements over 738 Jones Creek. This is a location in Jones Creek. And again, currently zoned, planning to develop, that's part of the original Jones Creek. There's an aerial view of the site, preview of the site. The applicant is requesting a variance to the side setback from 10 feet to five feet. They requested this in order to build a addition kind of off of this area here. And again, it's, it's two, it's going to encroach into the setback by four and a half feet. There was, and previously, and I believe it was 2008, there was an addition that you can see here that was constructed without a variance. There was apparently a mix-up somewhere where it wasn't a variance applied for. Again, you can see on this site, on the site plan where the proposed, proposed addition is going to go into the setback. And again, the variance is to reduce it down to five feet. Staff is comfortable with the request. It is staying out of the 10-foot drainage utility easement, which is located on the site plan, but the drainage utility easement is at five feet into the property line, and it's not going into that easement at all. So, again, staff is comfortable with the request and recommends approval. That recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
I'm David and my wife, Ellen. 21738 Jones Creek. We've been here for over about, close to 10 years. We didn't have a reason to come up with this room, except for the fact that my father passed away a few months ago, and my mother, she lives alone in Minnesota, she's 82, and can't climb the stairs. So, we looked at options of even building up an elevator, and that was then worked out. So, that is the only area that some of the building people that put forward a kind of review said that you can actually do that because it's going forward, it's not going away. And since we already had the other master bathroom that we had to build when we moved in there in 2006, we didn't have a master bathroom, so we actually built that one. And at that time, J.J. Ford was a builder, and from what I remember, he had applied for that variance, and nobody could find a record. She's passed away since, and this is the first time I'm getting involved as a homeowner to try to see if I can speed up the process or my mom can come and stay with us. And that's the reason why we're doing this room with a handicap accessible bathroom for her so that we can bring her over. Our request is for the recommendation for the 10-foot to be five-foot. And it's, or the total square footage of that new room, 12 square, 12 percentage of that room is actually in that, you know, outside that area. So, we're just requesting that granted to us, it'll be really appreciated.
Okay. Does your neighbor feel about the...
I think our neighbor's here. I talked to him about it.
Okay, we'll have an opportunity for you to come up in just a minute. All right? Any other questions?
How does the Jones Creek Architectural Committee feel about it?
We haven't gone there yet because after this is when I have to take it to them. Because I didn't, I don't know the procedure of that, and I don't know what is done for that particular room that was done in 2006. But we thought if we get this thing, then I'll take the drawings, I have the drawings from the architect, and then I can take it to them and then have that approved. And it does not affect the architectural design of the house and it's keeping in line with the design aesthetics of the house.
Don't we usually go by what the covenants would say?
No.
No, I think what Mr. Miller was getting at...
Two, two completely different processes.
Okay.
The county...
Want to make, I'm not against it, I just want to make sure you're doing it. I live in Jones Creek.
The county doesn't enforce private covenants, so regardless of what the Jones Creek VA will say about this, we have to make a decision based on whether this is appropriate for the county to issue.
But covenants trump the county decision.
That's what I was...
If, if they're enforced.
Like the brick wall issue that came up a couple of months ago.
Well, and like the fence that's just down, up the road from you, people built and that issue, a planning issue Butler got involved in because they had put it way out by the road and they had to move the fence back.
And this is, if you look at the picture of the house, it actually is, it's way back here.
Yeah, I, I know. I just, I'm just, I'm trying to make it so that you're not get messed up later.
Sure, I understand what you're saying, yes. I appreciate that, yeah. This whole process is a new process to me, so I'm just learning along the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever needs to be done, procedural wise, I'm, we're for it. We're always been for rules. We're always been for regulations, so I'm not somebody that's going to flout anything. So, I'm going to definitely take it with the Architectural Committee in Jones Creek before the building takes place.
All right, gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Yes, and if you'd like to come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name's Paul Eitner. I live at 740 Jones Creek Drive. I live on the side where he's wanting to build toward my house. From what I've been able to, to look at, I only see that he's wanting to come over like a foot. Now, as far as my personal concerns, as far as him building that, I have absolutely no problem with it because that's an area between our houses that there's no way I'm going to build 40 feet to the left of my house, you know? That's really not a foreseen property line. It's kind of, we know it's there, but not really, it's not really used. Now, for my neighbors that have all called me, and I've, I've told, told him that a lot of my neighbors have called me concerning this. I don't think that there's really an issue from my neighbors that I've heard from. They're just concerned that we're setting a precedent of getting within the five-foot boundary of the property line. I don't know about the covenants that you had mentioned, but I do know that there has been a lot of, lot of talk. But as far as me personally, I have absolutely no, no concerns with him building toward my house.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir. Please come up and give us your name and home address.
I'm Tom Adkin, 739 Jones Creek. I've looked at this house every day for 24 years, and I can tell you when the Davids moved in, since they've moved in. They didn't know I was going to come here and speak on their behalf.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file VA-16-1101 variance to reduce the side setback.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve carries four-zero. File VA-161102, Mr. Butler, I understand we have a request to table this till the 17th, but let's go ahead and conduct the public hearing tonight, and, and then we'll, we'll take the discussion from there.
All right, this is a request for 4429 Washington Road, requesting variances in section 9898 lists a lot of structural requirements, 98140 landscaping. Property's currently zoned, C2 general commercial. This is an aerial view of the site. It's the location of the Evans Diner. Everybody's familiar with the location. Again, the current zoning, everything around it is C2. Aerial view of the site, entry view of the site. The applicant has requested, in Evans Town Center, you have a, a front setback of five feet from the property line and a maximum of 125 in this case. It's a little different, so you have to have, the, the building has to be within that five to 125 area. The 125 is shown here, and they're requesting to, to waive that maximum setback. And also, the landscaping request is to permit 13 parking spaces without having a, an island. Normal regulations require 12 parking spaces, you have to have an island, whether it be at the end or what have you. They're requesting the 13 because this is an existing parking out here at the front, and they're trying to main, trying to keep all the material landscaping in front of that for their, their project. And again, they are looking to demolish Evans Diner, and in this case, this, this site plan does have dental office and also fast food on, on the site plan itself. Staff is comfortable with the, the variance applications, both of them. During review of the proposed site plan, there were some issues brought up with the actual site plan itself, and so we consulted with the engineer. He's, has asked to table this so they can kind of sort out how they want to move forward, and also if they need to request additional variances to the property.
So they wanna move, basically move back so the, the fronts of the, of the adjacent building lines up?
That's correct, yes.
Are they going to, to, since they've requested the thirteenth parking spot, are they gonna look at some additional planting trees somewhere on the property to make up? So we're, we're staying within the spirit of the.
That, that's definitely an option, uh, at this point, we're kinda, they're, they're still playing with their site plan. Again, we had some issues with it, uh, in review, um, so there's definitely some possibility of that being.
And, and I know we've had an issue with traffic, there's a high-pressure gas main, can, do you know where that is on the property?
Not offhand, I don't.
Okay.
Couldn't tell you. Uh, there, there is an easement that's here, I would assume it's.
I know Dr. Noel was, was, was asking about that earlier.
I think, I think the line actually kinda runs in this joint.
Right.
I wanna say that pressure regulating valve is about right there. Bill, is that? Okay.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Okay, uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular, uh, variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, gentlemen, we can, uh, make a motion and have some discussion if you'd like.
I was gonna ask if the applicant was here, is that enough time, but.
Well, they, they have asked for that.
They asked for November seventeenth.
Seventeenth, correct.
And also, so with, with the engineer today, uh, he's gonna have something to us next week.
With that, gentlemen?
Chair, I'll make a motion to, uh, table file VA one-six one-one oh-two November seventeenth.
Do it here second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to table? Motion carries four-zero. Have no legal matters, uh, we do have a minor waiver, Mr. Butler, I believe this is for information.
Sure, this is a minor waiver, I was for three-three-four-one Law Deck Way. Uh, the request was to reduce the front setback from fifty-five feet to forty-nine feet six, which is a reduction ten, uh, ten percent. I was at CK Hotels LLC, they, uh, they came in for a, uh, a new hotel, there's gonna be a few more hotels out here. And during review was found that their front setback wasn't correct, um, so in order not to move a, an entire hotel several feet, it was let's, let's have a minor waiver and move it three inches. That was, what was decided, and we'll see on the, uh, the site plan.
All right.
I think it was about three.
Literally three inches.
Yeah. I mean, you can see here.
Width of a brick.
I know.
Um, on, on the original site plan, they had a twenty-foot, uh, MBL, which, uh, wasn't correct, uh, for, for the site, it's supposed to be a thirty-foot or fifty-five-foot overhaul from the center line, uh, Law Deck Way. Um, so if they reduce it down to twenty-four and a half, uh, their hotel is meets that setback. Again, that was a minor waiver, uh, it was approved by staff on twenty.
Sir. Ms. Mystery, Community Pride Design Awards twenty sixteen.
Thank you, sir, uh, the county is doing the Community Pride Design Awards for this year again, and the notice went out in the water bill for the public to go online, um, for the survey links to vote for their favorite buildings. Uh, we've had a busy year, we've had a lot more buildings that we've had in a past year in three categories, uh, commercial, professional, and community. And, um, the public can vote until November twenty-third and then the winners will get their awards at the VOC meeting on the twentieth of December.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you very much. Any other staff or commissioner comments? Okay, any public comments, we don't have much public left tonight. Okay, with that, gentlemen, I'd accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries four-zero at six fifty-four. Next meeting is at six o'clock, November seventeenth in these chambers. Please remember to vote either this week or Tuesday.
Vote early and often.
Yeah.